Meeting to order, City of University Heights Iowa City Council meeting, today's November 11th, 2025, and the council president is Doug, Lisa, and Tim. Nick is ill tonight. And I want to say today is Veterans Day. Let us not forget to support our veterans and their families today and every day. And I want to acknowledge any veterans that are here tonight. Okay, thank you, John, for your service. Let's see, so we go to approval of minutes, October 14th. They were circulated by Mike. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved by unanimous consent. We'll go on to public input. Any comments from the public tonight? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, so we have presentation by Johnson County Public Health Team for the Community Health Assessment, and they sent regrets because it's Veterans Day, they're not working today. So they sent a statement, and Mike's gonna read that.
Dear council members, on behalf of the Johnson County Public Health, the Healthy JOCO Team would like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to have our statement read aloud today as we were unable to attend the meeting in person. The Healthy JOCO Team is currently conducting our Community Health Assessment Survey, which local health departments are required to complete every three to five years. This survey helps better understand the health needs, priorities, and experiences of Johnson County residents. The data collected from this anonymous survey will inform the development of our Community Health Improvement Plan, CHIP, a strategic plan that guides how we, along with community partners, address key health issues identified through the assessment. We would like to thank the University Heights City Council. We would like the University Heights City Council to be aware of this initiative and ask for your assistance in promoting the survey to community members. We have provided a flyer that can be printed and displayed at City Hall. We also ask that the information about the survey be shared on any available social media pages or the city's website. Residents can access the survey by scanning the QR code on the flyer, using the link provided, or visiting our website at, and they'd list the website. For questions or additional information, please contact us at healthyjoco@johnsoncountyiowa.gov. Thank you for your time, attention, and continued partnership in supporting the health and well-being of Johnson County residents. Sincerely, the Healthy JOCO Team, Johnson County Public Health.
Thank you, Mike, and thanks for posting the flyer on the front door and the back door. And I know Lisa put it in her report and a link to it. So thanks, everyone. Any questions on that? Comments? Okay, we'll go to Mayor's Report. And first of all, I wanted to say that because it is Veterans Day, Johnson County Auditor will not be certifying the election results until tomorrow, Wednesday, November 12th. And then I wanted to make a comment, and I sent this to council and some staff about, the League of Cities sent Municipal Leadership Academy email, and these are dates that are being held in December and January, and some of them are on Zoom, which is very nice. And I made a note for council to note that the December 18th date, it said it's a virtual meeting, and this meeting will satisfy the recently adopted state legislature requirement to complete open meeting, open records, training by new elected officials. And so I checked with Steve, and he said, oh, yeah. And I don't know. So did you want to make a comment, Steve, about that?
Too much, except the legislature did take that action. It's, you know, there's only two public bodies in the state of Iowa that aren't required to follow the open meetings and local records. That's the House of Representatives.
Oh.
But they do pass a law saying that not only you all have to follow, but you need to take training. And so, so you will.
I'm sure there'll be other opportunities too, but. And, and I noticed it's an $80 fee, and the city will reimburse, we've reimbursed what people, when council members wanted to attend any of these meetings. And so, thank you. And then, and then an agenda item I have is consideration of Resolution 2529, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of engagement with John Danos and Dorsey and Whitney LLP for consulting on financial matters related to bonding with consulting fees estimated at $15,000. And you know, we've done this with John Danos for many, many years. And so I need a motion. Motion by Lisa and a second, second by Doug. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Herbold absent. More. Schroder.
Aye.
Swales.
Aye.
Motion carries 301 absent.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on to, Steve, you had a lengthy legal report.
Did.
And why don't you go through some of these? Thank you.
Yeah. So I guess in the order that they're on the agenda, I tried to follow up on numerical order, but the order of the agenda. So the general obligation borrowing, and I think that agenda item that you just considered, the resolution actually has a not to exceed of $13,500. I think we set the agenda item high because we weren't sure what it was going to be, but that is the amount. So the council has before it two things with respect to the upcoming general obligation borrowing. If the council approves that borrowing, it's processed. So first is to get on council on board. Ms. Danos has helped the city many, many times, and we've done a great job. So that's, that's behind you. The second thing is to set a public hearing. So Resolution 2531 sets a public hearing on general obligation financing in an amount not to exceed $4.37 million. Maggie Berger is better suited to talk about these details than I am, but I talked, but I've talked to Maggie, and some of you all may know the details better than me, but there isn't any idea that the city's going to undertake a $4.37 million borrowing next year. But the idea is let's get the process in place, set the stage for borrowing in that amount. First part of it, you know, with respect to some street infrastructure that Ryan can talk about in preliminaries, I guess you might say, Narrows Avenue Complete Streets, I think is a $1.5 million amount. So that's, that's what's anticipated to actually be borrowed in a 20, in a calendar year 2026 timeframe. But the hearing that Maggie suggests that the council set for 7 o'clock December 9th, start of the next council meeting, would be for that entire $4.37 million. So that's what 2531 does. It just sets a public hearing, asks the city clerk to publish that in the newspaper. And then, you know, as I say, Maggie, and maybe John, but I think mostly Maggie will provide further detail at that hearing and as we go.
Okay, so I need a motion for consideration of Resolution 2531. Motion by Lisa, is there a second? Second by Tim. Discussion. Roll call vote.
More?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Herbold absent. Motion carries 301 absent.
Thank you.
The next two items relate to the OUP TIP, and every bit of this is a repeat, as it has been for the last seven, 10 years, sort of seven years, yeah, except the numbers change. And so, so the OUP TIP is what's called a rebate tip. A tip, you know, tip stands for tax incremental financing. The increment, the idea of the increment is the, then the idea of what's called urban renewal that gives the city the opportunity to access or use the TIP vehicle is, you know, you've got properties, some piece of land somewhere, that's got some sort of value, whatever it is. And if, if, if development occurs in a certain way that's proposed by a developer and, you know, engaged with the city, well, then, then the idea is that that, that development is going to increase the value of that property. And so whatever the value starts at, and then whatever it ends up with after the improvement, that, that's the increment. The increment changes because the valuation of the property, even after it's completed, can change. Everything goes well, the value of the property goes up every couple of years, which is what's happened here. In this situation, so the OUP TIP, OUP is first where we're sitting, and this property has been senior during church. So, so the taxation value is almost nothing because church property typically is not tenanted. And so almost all of the value of the OUP project is increased. Right, so what does that mean? Well, this is a rebate tip. And so when the council adopted, they were entered into a TIP development agreement with the developer of OUP back in that 2015 timeframe, the, the agreement says that every year, and tonight's the night for 2025, the council will consider what's called a rebate tip. So there are different kinds of tips, and I won't go into all of them. But it is important for the council, I think, to understand that the tip that the city agreed to enter into the development agreement for with, with OUP, it's, it's not a, you know, the city didn't put money into the project to borrow money or help the developer borrow money. I mean, I'm sure that what the city did help, but the city did not obviate itself in this way. The city said, look, as, as taxes would become due, we will, we will agree to rebate or agree to consider rebating those two U on annual basis. And it's the increment, the tax increment, it's not 100% of the taxation or the tax that the property pays. There are certain taxes, schools, and some other things that are exempted. But there's an amount that is subject to TIP valuation increment. And what the development agreement says is that the council annually will consider a rebate of 95% of that amount to the developer. So what's before you tonight is, is two things. One is to, is to authorize an internal advance of funds to pay a portion of project costs. So the developer has in the past received 95%, and the city gets the 5%. So 30, Resolution 2532 authorizes an internal advance of funds in the amount of $33,360, which, which is the city's portion of that, of that, that TIP rebate. Then the next Resolution 2533 is the 95%, which is, you know, $633,844 that would be rebated to the developer. Taxes are paid a year behind in Iowa. The TIP process ends up being, you know, prospective a year ahead. So the taxes that we're talking about will be paid in fiscal year '26, '27. They would actually be delivered to the developer then in June of 2027. And again, none of this is an expenditure from the city. It's just a rebate of taxes, which they're authorizing the rebate of taxes, which haven't even been assessed yet, much less paid, but it goes forward. So that's what's before you. 252032 authorizes an internal advance. I don't know, I don't know what the right words to use, an accounting maneuver. Some of that doesn't sound good. It's all just fine. Steve's in charge. But, but it, it, it authorizes an internal advance and accounting mechanism to account for that, the city's 5% of that tip. So that's what 2532 is.
Thank you. So first, we have consideration of Resolution 2532. Is there a motion? Motion by Lisa, second?
No, I think that was Doug.
Also.
Second by Doug. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Discussion.
And clarification. That doesn't go on forever, right? Because there's a amount that we're getting up to, and then all the taxes come to University Heights.
Yeah, that's right. And that's a really good question. I was going to mention that. I'll see if I can put something together. We're, we're quite a ways ahead of schedule. Mike probably knows it better than me, but, but when, when the city entered into the development agreement with the TIP development agreement and this undertaking consideration of the overall OUP project, the city hired a financial consultant, and, and that consultant, you know, provided some, I don't know if they were conservative, it looks like they were today, but, you know, some estimates of how long that tip would last. And, and it won't last anywhere near that. We're, we've probably got, I was going to say three, three and a half. I think something like that, yeah.
Which would put us about almost five years ahead of schedule.
Yeah. Good you brought that up. That's kind of an important point. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, so roll call vote.
Swales.
Aye.
More? Herbold absent. Schroder?
Aye.
Motion carries 301. I am always ready.
And now we have consideration of Resolution number 2533. Is there a motion? Motion by Tim, is there a second?
Also.
Second by Doug. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Okay, Herbold absent. More?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales? Motion carries 301.
Thank you. And now I think Steve and John are going to talk about Resolution 2534. Were you going to talk about Urban Renewal Report?
Yep.
Are you going to start for John? Okay.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. So, yeah, actually, the next four topics and resolutions are the end of the year process to adjust books and close it out and everything. John and I have been working on that for the last two and a half weeks. Went really well. Every, seems like every year, every other year, there's something new on the online program to do. So we had a couple of challenging moments there, but we got through it. Okay. So, but we have everything all, all completed and adjusted out for the year. And so the reports are taken directly from the accounting records, and they're submitted to the state. All three of these reports are due December 1st. So, so the first one, since the topic is still fresh and hot in everybody's mind, the Urban Renewal Report.
Yes.
I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but this is the summary of it. Basically, this is for the TIP fund. We started the balance with zero cash, and during the year, we collected a total of $618,634 of TIP receipts and also TIP backfill payments from the state, which was a very, very small amount. Yeah.
$67.
So anyway, in compliance with the TIP agreement, 95% of that, the 587, 702, was paid out to Maxwell at the end, towards the end of June. The non-rebate expenditure of $30,932, that's that 5% set aside out of, out of the total of TIP receipts for the year. And that is being set aside for any further TIP project. The rest of the pages are just a little bit more detailed. They've got valuation of the property and project descriptions and so forth. I don't have anything else to add to the report, except at the bottom line there, that $2.4 million figure, that's, that's the approximate balance that's owed on the developer agreement. So at $600,000 a year, we're looking at having that paid off in four years, which is five years ahead of schedule. So.
Okay, so we'll do one at a time, and we'll do consideration of that Resolution 2534. Is there a motion by Lisa, second? By him? Is there discussion? Questions? Discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Herbold absent. More? Motion carries 301.
Thank you. So we'll go to the next one, 2535. This is the IDOT. Annual City Street Financial League.
Yep, this is the annual report filed with the Iowa Department of Transportation. It's a summary of all of the street-related activity during the year. First of all, the expenses. These are pretty much same standard expenses that we've had, streetlight costs, other maintenance and repair. That's just some of various sidewalk and street repair projects plus Ryan's engineering fees on those repair projects. Street maintenance expense, the $10,000, I believe that was street sweeping. Next line down, capacity improvement, $148,217, that was the amount paid on capital projects, I believe. Let's see, the next two, next three lines, that's just the debt repayment on portion of bonds that's applicable to streets. And then we have some other costs at the bottom, traffic control and safety, that's basically signage and so forth, snow removal, other engineering fees, and street sweeping, cleaning. Revenue. Revenue, property tax on the debt service one, we levied about $36,600. And also, the next line, that is the hotel motel tax. We have $100,733 that's dedicated to paying portions of the street bonds. State paid the city $174,400 in road use tax money. And then we also had special assessments for the year, $41,0982, that's the OUP special assessments. The transfer in and transfer out is just transferring the dollars like from debt service and hotel money to the debt service fund to actually pay the loans. Then we have a breakdown of the bonds that have, that are all or a portion of applied to the streets. And then we had one major project completed this last year. This was the Monroe Project. Totally, it was a little over $224,000. And then we just have a summary of everything at the end. So these numbers are also the same numbers that are included in the annual report, which will be the next item. Let's.
Okay. You and John worked on all of these together. Very good. So Resolution 2535 is before the council. Can we have a motion? Motion by Tim, second by Lisa. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Swales?
Aye.
Herbold absent. More?
Schroder?
Aye.
Motion carries 301.
We have 2536 approving and directing the filing of the annual financial report for 2425.
Okay. Okay, this is the cumulative report of all funds of the city during the year. This will be published yet sometime this month. We will work on that after the meeting and pick a date that we want to have that published, so we can get that filed with the state. I didn't have a whole lot really to cover. A lot of items were fairly close to the budget numbers for the year. Down in the expenses and expenditures, we did have two categories that were slightly over budget. Public safety and then capital projects. Of course, when we do the budget and then the amended budget, by the time we do the amended budget, we're still trying to project what's going to happen by the end of June. So we may go over a little bit, we may be a little under. But when you compare all the actuals to the budget numbers, for the most part, we're fairly close to the budget for the year. The expenditures are on the bottom half of that detail there. We do a little bit over, a little bit over $2.5 million total volume in the city for all revenues and expenses. Net for the year, we ended up with a change in the cash balance positive $25,900. We have $1,582,000 on hand at June 30th. And then the bottom part is just other little detail for the five bonds that we have outstanding. The total principal balance is $1,425,000. And the city's constitutional general obligation debt limit is just a little under $11,000, or $11,400,000. And that's 5% of the gross valuation of property in the city. So that's, that's the maximum general obligation bond capacity that the city could carry. So as you can see, we're not a whole lot over, just a little over 10% of our capacity is borrowed out right now. So. The remainder of the pages is a breakdown by function, and then also the details within each function, like for the public safety, it would be police, fire, things like that. We have other items in other departments, libraries, and so forth. I didn't really have any comments about, you know, any unusual expenses or anything. The very last page, the page 11 of that, this is, this is a new schedule. We have to actually provide the detail on the bond activity during the year.
Okay, maybe rotate it. Seven, Steve?
There we go. Okay. So that's, that's the detail on the five outstanding bonds during the year. We've never had to submit that with the annual report before. Covers pretty much every day, everything, you know, the data, data of the resolution to approve the bonds, the interest rates on the bond, whether they were voted or non-voted bond, due dates and so forth. And then pretty much description of what those bonds were used for. In, in previous years, all we had to do was put the beginning of the year balance in the program, calculate it out, and what the end of the year amount is with no details. So in the budgeting process, there's a very condensed, similar type schedule, but it doesn't have this much detail. So it's kind of a challenge going back through some old records and getting, getting the details on that. But that is the detail on the five outstanding bonds. So. But it's pretty much what I had to cover on it.
Okay, so we have consideration of Resolution 2536 before council with this annual finance report. Is there a motion? Motion by Lisa, second by Doug. Discussion. Roll call vote.
Herbold absent. More?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries 301 absent.
And then we just some housekeeping about Resolution 2537 authorizing and confirming. And then we just some housekeeping about Resolution twenty five thirty seven authorizing and confirming fund transfers.
What this pertains to is the transfer between funds for the year. Up until about five years ago, there was no requirement to have any city council approval of that, that changed four or five years ago, so the city's required, you know, to approve the transfer for the year. We've had four transfers. Let's see here, it would be on to go to supplemental or the attachment here to explain it all. Okay, so first one, you know, every year in December and June, we have a semi-annual transfer funds from the debt, from other funds to the debt service fund to pay those the semi-annual interest, and then in June we pay semi-annual interest plus the annual principal payment. That's just a total amount required that the hotel motel tax funded a hundred, about a hundred and twenty one thousand four hundred dollars. And the special assessments funded seventy seven thousand six hundred dollars of bond payments during the year. Second, transfer. Okay, this is the hotel hotel tax of basically fully benefits. Yeah, that was for, I believe, eight months. I believe Troy has been city administrator seven or eight months, something like that. Yeah, and that's, that's what that is, we made an agreement for five percent of the hotel motel tax money is dedicated basically to any legal purpose of the city, and we had not used any of that since we started collecting it, well, we have that money on hand to pay for that. Current year that we're in, I believe we're going to have enough money to also fund Troy's salary and benefits for the year going forward, it'll probably be a split between what we can get for that five percent of the hotel money, and then the rest will be filled in with local option sales tax money, so. So anyway, this will, this will be an annual transfer. The third transfer, that is just the five percent retainage out of TIF proceeds for the year for the TIF projects set aside. That is being held by the general fund. And the last adjustment is every year the special revenue employee benefits fund has a balance at June thirtieth for the employer share of social security and Medicare tax and state unemployment and hipers. City portion of the hipers. And what we do is we just, every year, we just adjust that fund, that balance at June thirtieth for what's to pay. Some years we have extra that we move into the general fund, some years we come a little short and transfers money out of the general fund to balance that, but that's the four transfers for the year. And they are all, all included in the annual financial report too, so.
Thank you for that detail, so we got consideration Resolution number twenty five thirty seven authorizing the fund transfers, is there a motion? Motion by Lisa's or second, second by Tim? Discussion. Roll call vote.
Schroeder. I. Swales. I. For bold absent more. Carry three zero one.
Thank you. Thanks very much, John and Steve for all your work on this, I know you met several times working on it and appreciate it.
It gets easier.
Thank you. And then we're going to be filing paperwork here too.
Yeah, for the annual financial report, even though it gets published in the newspaper, there's a separate one that has to be a hard copy signed by you and Mike, so we'll look at that for your deadline. Get that done before the end of the month, so.
Thank you for coming in person. Nice to see you, so we'll go to Troy's city administrator report, and you circulated that.
Yes, just like to highlight a couple items. On the Swisher track, our trails proposal that goes before the Board of Regents, they are meeting meant today through tomorrow, Thursday. We are on tomorrow's agenda, as far as consideration of allowing the city use of of their adjacent properties as part of our proposed trail system. It's contacted earlier by, I guess, that reporter. And I expect, expect that either sometime tomorrow or after the region's action tomorrow, there'll be an article. I still prefer I should refer to it to the entire city. Then I'd like to highlight the tree board, there was a tree board meeting last night, but aside from that, the tree board used, you're familiar that we get a community grant from Mid-American. And we get a thousand dollars a year typically, the tree board used that money, there had to be a match on it. Fiddlehead Gardens, which is owned by Puris and Tastic Purises on a tree board. They contributed that match in both funds, working kind of materials. And the last month, there were four trees that were planted around the community, but I wanted to give a shout out in particular to Mid-American Energy and Fiddlehead Gardens for providing the funds and materials for allowing us to do that. If you have any questions after reviewing my report, it'd be, you know, now we like to.
Any questions for Troy? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the Clark report, and you circulated that too.
I don't have any, no, I do have one other thing to report, kind of along the lines of what we've been doing with annual reports and things, the city's annual examination with Cronlogi and Olson will be on December sixteenth. So John and I will be around and we do that via Zoom, and we as a city, we put our annual examination contract up for bid last year and we awarded that to Cronlogi and Olson for five years, and they have done, they have done the city examinations back at least fifteen years, if not twenty. So.
I think Steve Cole found them for us initially.
Yeah, they were, they're in a great, they were in a great, we were in.
They've been very good.
Informal CPAs, they're it's getting harder and harder to find CPAs in Iowa that do city and school audits and things like that.
Since COVID, we've done it via Zoom, but we were one of the few places they always wanted to come to because they're in Charles City, so to get a whole bunch of better restaurants. They get their day, they thought it was a good day, they thought it was a good day, it was, it was fun to come here.
And will it be virtual or?
We'll do it virtual again, yeah, it, it's a lot easier that.
They'll send us some advanced stuff, so. You know, a lot of that, we'll submit it to them. I might lock a few people from the chief acres. Because we've always picked one of the leases, so I'm pleased to look at all of it, but so that's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I had.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go on to John Brown, his report and payment of bills. We've got them right.
I do, I have one item to add to Mr. Lawrence and say city of the library bill. Last year. Now to seven thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars and five cents.
All right, as to paying for twenty five.
Twenty four twenty five. Pipers came out with a new rates. I think I told you to everybody, and I double checked, it's no change, no change for the enforcement, no change for citizens. Employees portion of space, portion, no change.
Okay, with that addition, are there any objection to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. Any questions for John? Have a good time on your trip, John. And we'll go on to finance and we don't have a finance report this month, we'll go on, we have all the other reports. We'll go on to the chief, he has community protection and he submitted a report today. And you did have a little trick or treat around the.
I did, you know, it was a little surprising because asking the parents to take pictures of their small humans, some of them were hesitant, and so this one jumped out.
That was nice, I know, I didn't ask a single person, but I wanted to take them all. They were so adorable.
Yes, absolutely, I was wondering with it, I don't have anything to add to the report. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Chief? Thank you, the games have been going real good.
Absolutely.
I mean, as far as the tailgating and all that. We just have to go down to the last minute, don't we, and then everybody comes out at once.
Absolutely.
But you know, it's just been going real smooth, that you and the university are making the traffic move so nicely.
We've had, unfortunately, we've had a lot of close games and ended up on the short end of them, but when you have close games, everybody stays in the stadium.
You get them out of here, that's great, thank you. And any other questions, we'll go to streets and sidewalks and Ryan you sent around a report.
Yeah, I think the only things, I'd only touch on a couple of updates here, the Kozier Avenue asphalt curves that we did this summer in the two hundred block of Kozier. You know, I had talked with the we did not have Pelling put topsoil and seed in, that's kind of a last minute coordination thing. So I had talked to Russ Boyer and I'll just I, I don't know if everybody knows, but he had an injury due to, to his knee and was out for some time, so that's he's also kind of behind on some of the sign replacement work due to that injury, getting that work done. So we reached out to Sustainable Landscape Solutions and I've got a quotation from them today with some questions back to them just about the way that their form is for payment requirements and things, like their contract language on that quotation, so. But that quotes for less than nine hundred dollars, and I think that's a pretty fairly reasonable price for mobilization, the topsoil and the seeding work there for the small area, so we'll probably just send that.
Nine hundred, did you say?
Yeah, it's like eight hundred and seventy. So. So I'll.
That sounds fair. Is what I've seen, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll send that on to Troy and Mayor Fromm and Doug. Once we, I get some any questions back and forth with them finished, so. And then the R F Bs were working on the design, the survey was completed this last month after our last meeting, and then we're working on design and I'll be reaching out to City of Iowa City on that one, I think the mayor asked me kind of how soon is that going to be done, I, my intent or hope is that we'll be able to issue that for to, for quotations really, I have going to be a public figure, but estimated amount is not, it doesn't hit the threshold for that, but my intent is that we would request quotations back before Christmas, so that then we can make sure we avoid the holiday season for people to see things. It's always a tricky, tricky time for, for anybody missing work, and then I think we would intend to award that at the January council meeting at that point, and then I got an update, I estimated it'd be about a monthly time to get the equipment, I talked to an electrical contractor today who's done one of these recently, and they, they said it's more like eight to ten weeks, so it's probably more than two months before the equipment will be in, once they order that, so it's more like early March before that, that's potentially going to be installed, so. Just wanted to give an update there so that there's not just to the expectations that are timed around.
That's epic, crosswalk.
Yeah, that's the sunset, the sunset, Hillcrest intersection, Rosswalk, some of this. And then I think just generally, I want to say thanks to the police department for helping us out with some storm surge inspections on Melrose Avenue, so Melrose Avenue, when white sidewalks went in, there were some new intakes installed. The curb was actually brought in and reduced the width of the street, and those intakes are under the road. The lids are locking style lids, they're very difficult to remove and they are you know, in the gutter of the street, so we don't pass, so we had some help from the police department flagging traffic while we got into those intakes for the first time in price and for inspections. They're in good shape, which is good.
So glad to keep everybody safe.
Yes, yeah, yeah, that was.
That's good. Thank you.
Good feeling to get out of there without getting hit. Yeah, otherwise I don't think I have anything else to add to my written report.
Thank you.
Put sand barrels out soon.
Oh yeah, hang on just a second, actually they.
We're not having snow this year. Why do we need them?
Mark emailed today with an he said oh man, they're getting snow out east, he said they'll place sand barrels all week after the Michigan State Desert. I'm pretty sure he's on.
That's, that's, that's the twenties, it'd be right at the beginning of Thanksgiving.
So after the last home game, they thought it. That's the last home game, right? Yeah, the brass can trash their night. So, yeah, probably like so two weeks from today, probably.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good question.
And you worked out the locations already, I saw a chart, yeah, you saw that.
So yeah, we have a new location on Kozier and Mark acknowledged that they, they should have no problem in signing.
Okay. And then with that, do you have anything to add, Tim, building zoning sanitation?
There was a question that came in, Terry's looking at, somebody asked about temporary pods, storage pods. They send those on the property, Terry's looking into that.
Oh.
He asked what size it's going to be.
Yes. Need to know what to do with that, that's. Any questions for Tim? And all will go to eGovernment and you'll get up and here's your report here. Did you want to make any comments? Just if there's any questions for Lisa, thanks for putting all that information on the survey so that it goes to their site, so for the survey. So.
No, leads.
Lead pickup, there you go. The last, the last round. I still got some trees, I got to tell my trees to drop their leaves. And oh, we do have a spring cleanup, Dave. Two, okay, thank you for that, thanks Lisa. And are there any announcements? Hearing none. There's no objection, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent.